Robert's Rules of Order, excuse my voice, I have a bit of laryngitis or something that's going around. Could we read the roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Mayor Watts.
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel. Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Evil.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
City Attorney Bax.
Here.
Thank you. You've all been sent in minutes ahead of time. Are there any questions concerning those?
I just had one on that and it was at the very end where we were talking about, Michael and I were talking about at the end, just a clarification on the agreement between the Little League and the city. And maybe just if you want to just go on record on what you told me, just to everybody on that.
We do do an annual contract agreement with Terry Collins, President of the Little League, and it does state in there that a sum of seventy-five dollars is paid to the town to offset the use of the utilities. That is never collected. It's just basically saying that he agrees what he's going to use the park for and to keep it clean and stuff like that, but no money is ever exchanged. Not since I've been here.
Anyone else want to be recognized for questions? Okay. Do I have a...
So I guess the motion would be just to make sure that that's mentioned in the end of the minutes because it was discussed on that, on that one meeting. Other than that, I was, I was good, so.
So we can just include that. Okay. With that included in the minutes, do I hear a motion that we approve them?
Motion.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved, this is sent out to you. Thank you. Now, we have consideration of bills over two thousand dollars.
And there were none.
There were none. Alright, great. That goes to my report then. I've sent a letter to you that I received from JAG this morning. I emailed you and I put your copy here saying that basically because they think it's the best business model, in fact, they said to conduct the fiscal business, it's a simpler way to conduct the business of the agreement. They are using the county as the grantee, which is the fiscal, the physical person who will take care of paying the personnel ahead and then they will be reimbursed. So that is JAG's decision on this. You have a letter about that. It's moving ahead as planned for our March fifteenth start date, I believe, on that. So all is good with that. Okay, the second part of this is amphitheater and as we voted that did not move forward and I have a letter from the tourism department that was sent, we've got a copy there on that. It could not be, according to them, put at a different location under that grant if we want to reapply at later date. They said we're welcome to, yes, sir.
It was my understanding in what you sent us in an email that the reason that they would not consider moving to another location is because we did not have another location available at the time. Is that not correct?
At that specific time, but you can reapply if you have a location. That's what you said in the letter. Yes. We're open to reapplying if we find a different location. So yes, I would be quite open to that. Thank you. The facade grant, Ms. Dawn, are you here, please?
Yes.
Okay, would you please tell us an update on that?
Okay.
This is our grant writer for that, the paper grant.
We are meeting with the building owners and they are developing their applications right now to submit before noon on Tuesday, the twelfth. And then, once they submit those applications, the committee will review them and if all goes well, April first, they, the committee will announce who gets the funding for the project in the downtown area. So we're moving along nicely.
And do we have quite a few people who apply?
Yes, yes. Everybody, there's a lot of good applications being compiled right now. Lots of different applications.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
How many applications did you get?
How many applications did we?
Did you get turned in?
They're not turned in yet. They're due on Tuesday, the twelfth, which is next Tuesday at noon. Right now, I'm working today alone. I saw five different building owners and I know of three others that I was talked to on the phone. And of course, there'll probably be one or two that just show up, so.
Yes, sir.
What are they generally applying for?
You know, a lot of them are looking...
General.
A lot of them are looking at awnings. We're looking at just improving the facades, some doors, a little bit of painting, historical features on the buildings, so.
So the awnings is the top thing?
It looks that way, yes.
Mr. Petty.
What is the maximum amount per business owner that's involved?
The committee did not set an amount of maximum amount.
Then what is the maximum amount of the entire grant?
Ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two thousand, okay. So basically, you divide it equally among the ones that, if they need that much.
It'll be based on what the committee decides. They have a scoring sheet and they will score it and then the one that is, you know, top scorer goes down until they run out of money.
Any further questions from the council? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the JAG grant, you kind of glossed over what's happened with that grant. Just wanted to make clear to the council, so essentially, the grant is moving forward, but the city's been cut out, correct?
Not totally, no. I mean, what, what happened is you have what's called the grantee, which we had been the grantee. You also have the other side, which is the court system. As long as the money comes through JAG to them, it doesn't matter if it's the city or the county. So what has happened is JAG, in consideration of it's gone from a nonprofit to now the court system, which is the county system, they felt for accounting and other purposes, it would be better for the county to pay the ten ninety-nine personnel that are contracted by the court upfront and then reimburse. It would just be a simpler, cleaner business style for them. This is their decision. It's their money, so it's moving forward.
And would you care to inform the rest of the council what the reasoning for that decision was?
Because it's a better business model for them, for the court, for, well, for the county.
And do you have no knowledge that the decision was made by the state and the grantors to cut the city out because they could not work with your office after you became involved?
No, that's not correct. That's not correct.
So it would surprise you that the county officials who are taking...
Excuse me, ma'am, where are you getting your information?
From the county officials who are taking over the grant after the city has been cut out.
Well, I'm sorry, but they haven't been privy to this. Now, this is something that if you want to discuss in private with me, I'd be glad to, but you're out of, you're out of order and this is going to stop right now.
We don't discuss things in private. We do it openly.
I sent an email requesting a status update as to this last week.
This is your status update from, from them?
I was told I couldn't receive a status update. I had to bring it out in public meeting. I'm bringing it out in public meetings and I need an update, but you're not being truthful.
Okay, alright, may I read, would you please, Michael, would you mind reading this letter that we received from, so we can have a public reading of this letter?
The one from Jeremiah Morton?
Yes, just a second. If you would, we'll read it publicly so everyone is on the same page of what they're saying here. And this comes from the JAG organization in Nashville, who are the people who give out this money, who decided this is a better business model to give it through the county rather than through the city. And it's their choice, but Michael, would you please read it?
Mayor Smith, I'm writing you about the at-risk youth grant that the City of Carthage awarded in two thousand and eighteen. The original application provided to us was going to leverage a nonprofit entity to perform the requested services and pursuant to the requirements of the solicitation, the state required that a local government entity support the project by acting as a pass-through entity for nonprofits involved in the project. Due to circumstances beyond the state's control, the original start date of July one had to be moved forward because of delays in processing the award that will be used to fund this project from the federal government.
Excuse me, I will interject. They had also a change in the directorship in JAG prior to even my coming on board, so this is part of the process that happened. Let's take over.
When the funding was ultimately cleared, your jurisdiction had undergone a change in leadership and so it became necessary to reexamine the project to make sure everyone involved was aware of what their contractual obligations would be. During these discussions, it was determined that the Smith County Judge's office, rather than a nonprofit, will be best poised to deliver these services. The Office of Criminal Justice Programs has reviewed the project proposal and determined that the most efficient way of structuring this agreement is to contact directly with Smith County for services. This will alleviate the administrative burden for all of the organizations involved in the project because the town of Carthage will no longer exist solely to pass through funds to an agency we can contract with directly. This will allow the town of Carthage to reap the rewards of the services that have been proposed but not require them to act as a middleman, which will force them to, one, reviews the county's invoice expenses for validity, two, pay those invoices in order to become encumbered by the expenses, and three, invoice estate for the encumbered expenses and await payment. In short, this is simply a cleaner way to conduct the fiscal business of this agreement. On behalf of the state of Tennessee, Office of Criminal Justice Programs, I wanted to say how much I value your participation in the project planning phase. We greatly appreciate your responsiveness as well as your willingness to work with us towards resolutions to any barriers that arose. We've discussed this transition via phone and so I think you're fully aware of the need, but if you or anyone in the town of Carthage have additional questions, please reach out to myself or Gary Lee. We anticipate initiating this program with Smith County as soon as possible. Thanks. Jeremiah Morton, Senior Program Manager.
I hope that will allay any concerns you have. They're very happy about going forward. This is going to start March fifteenth. Same group on the county side who was involved before will be involved. It's, to me, it's, it's a good business model. They've said it's a good business model. I hope we can all go forward in good faith and support these people. We're going to do everything on our end to support them, give additional monies if they need it. It's, we're not deserting this project. We're just, someone else has taken, has become the fiscal agent for it. And that's by JAG's request. Okay, yes, sir.
One, Cory. Why, why was this just, I mean, why, why was the procedure not run as soon as you, as soon as you found out about this, why was it not disseminated among the council?
I just got it this morning. I, as soon as I got it, I forwarded the email to you. You got it as soon as I did.
We got, we got an email, another Councilwoman Scott. Can I finish my question?
If you're, if you're, why would you not want this to go forward? It sounds like you don't want it to go forward.
May I finish my question?
Please finish.
Okay. The first I heard about it was not this morning. It was from Councilwoman Scott's email. And this is just another of longest things where I'm not, I'm not getting any communication from the city until either right before a meeting or it's, it's basically, I feel like there's, where we make a decision as a council, the executive branch is not...
Excuse me, you got this as soon as I got it. I got this, this morning?
I guess I'll, I'll finish my question.
When I came back in from a meeting, I forwarded it to you.
You don't get a chance to. I'll resend my question, then.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm doing this as soon as I get it, you get it as soon as I get it. If I'd gotten it Friday, I would have forwarded it to you Friday.
I would just respectfully ask that to please include your counsel more in some of these things.
I am trying my best. You have a copy of everything I have received.
So that, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out is why is the public aware of and why are other council, council members aware of and why is everybody in the county and the state aware of?
Again, I don't know who you're referring to.
But you're just aware of right now.
I, I sent you, on Friday, we were talking, I think I sent you something on Friday. Everything I've gotten from them, I've tried to forward to you. If, if you...
I have no opinion of the matter. I just don't get any information.
If you don't want the county to be in charge of this, if you would rather be in charge of, let me know. We'll, we'll tell the county.
And see, and that's, that's the fact, that's what I'm getting at. And I'm not, I'm not trying to pick a fight here. I'm honestly just trying to inquire. If I don't have information to see if it would be beneficial if the city's involved with it or not, I don't make a decision. And if this is, it seems like a decision's already been made.
It's not, but, but Councilman Evil, it's not even your decision, it's JAG's decision. It's their money. It's their grant. And if they say this is the business model they would like, to me, that's, it's like if you were investing in something with your money and I came along and said, well, no, you have to do it this way because that's the way.
If I invest my money and sign a contract with someone and then pull my money out, I don't have the right...
There was no contract ever signed here.
Well, see, and that's the thing is, again, pardon my ignorance, but I don't know because I haven't been involved.
Well, neither have I. I'll be honest, when I came on board, there were a series of grants. All I knew that we didn't have a contract for this one because there'd been this change in the JAG administration. There had been a change of scope because it went from nonprofit to, to this court. Excuse me, Ms. Dawn, would you help me out here because you know the history of this? It started out as a nonprofit. The scope changed to the court system. We didn't have a contract for months and months and months because of this. We waited to get a contract. We still do not have a contract that's up to date and signed. So again, Ms. Scott, you seem to know more about this than I do. Would you inform me?
Yes, Mayor Smith. I received a phone call last week from Judge Michael Collins wanting to know why he had just received a message from you stating that you were canceling the grant.
No, I did.
And that it was your intention to send the funds back because you did not want the city involved.
Let her finish, please.
Well, go ahead, but that was, he was confused.
Judge Collins had received a message from you stating that you did not want the city involved in this, that it was your intention to cancel the grant funds so that the county and city would not benefit from it. His assistant also heard your message. He was absolutely livid since they already have individuals in place to administer the funds, administer the programs, wanted to know why the city didn't want to be involved in this. I told them that was the first I had heard about the city withdrawing from this project. So that was when I sent the email requesting a status update from you.
Yes.
And your response was that I couldn't have a status update because it would violate a sunshine law.
No.
For us to receive any information outside of a public meeting. Because you continuously refused to give us any information and then you sit here and tell us that it was the state's decision. The only reason the state has decided to give the grant funds to the county is because they have decided they cannot work with you and they would prefer that the Smith County youths benefit from this.
Ms. Scott, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm not going to let you sit there and semi slander me. This letter says nothing to that effect. This is the letter from JAG.
No, that letter does not, but the phone calls...
Well, Ms. Scott, did you read their mind? I'm not sure where you're getting this. This is the letter that they sent.
I'm getting this from the administrator.
There was, there was, we all got the conversation from Michael Collins. There is things previous to this letter that have come down on this.
And if, if I may, Mayor?
May I just ask you, do, okay, I think we can say, you can do and feel what you want. This is going forward. It's going forward with JAG's grace and goodwill wishes and their money. And it's going through the court system and it's going through the county as the...
But the city now has a black eye because
No, we don't.
The state was not able to work with you to get a contract signed.
Well, I'm sorry. We don't have a black eye with JAG because they said they'd like to work with us again. And, and that's their, again, I have no idea what your conversations have been. I know this is what JAG has sent us. And we've spent enough time on this. Can we please move on? This is, this is taken care of. There's going to be a wonderful grant for these kids. It's like two hundred thousand dollars over three years. We will help and city any way we can with this, but this is, this is, we're just beating a dead horse there. This is what JAG has asked us to do because this is their business model. And quite, I mean, it seemed pretty efficient to me. No, we're moving on. I'm sorry, we're moving on. This is, well, no.
I'd like to motion to continue discussion. Second?
Go right ahead. No, excuse me.
You can have a vote.
Let, let me have a vote of everyone who feels we need to continue talking about this, that, for whatever reason.
It was a motion.
It's got, we can have a discussion on it. I'm content to the motion, so no discussion.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All in favor of continuing discussion? We have to have a two-thirds majority.
Aye.
Okay.
I think...
Excuse me, you want to be...
Yes, I apologize. May I be corrected?
And again, Robert's Rules, any motion, you get one time around and a second time around and then we call Christian. Okay?
I think what's, what's going on here is, is you're saying that JAG has made a decision, correct? But, and apparently, there was discussion that happened between you and JAG and everyone else, but what, I think what we're getting is we've not have been involved in any of this process. And we're the city council. We'd like to be involved because we represent our constituents.
Sir, I, I haven't been involved that much anyway. We went to a meeting one day, the first time I'd ever even met with these folks. Dawn, the grant writer, and Michael were going to Judge Collins' office. And I said, well, do I need to come to this meeting too? And they said, probably so. We walked in. By the time I got there, it was already, the judge was not happy about something and was talking to them. This is before I even got involved in any of this. And I tried to bring the discussion back to the table. It had something to do with what he thought the grant would be written for, was not the way it was going. It was the first time I had even heard of any of this. It was the first meeting I'd ever gone to. Apparently, they didn't even want us being there at the meeting. So from day one, I've been in the dark almost as much as you have. There's never been a contract to this day that has come back that is ready to sign. There has been a change in the JAG administration. There's been a change from it being a nonprofit to going to a court system. There have been changes out the kazoo. And every time, there has been something. I have tried to work with Judge Collins and his group, with Angela Bain, with Lisa Reese. We, we, we sent this supposed contract back and forth and back and forth for about five times, trying to cut it down to where it should be. We thought we had it to a place and then there was not displeasure on it for someone's part. So it's been going back and forth. And then the last part of it was, alright, and I didn't mean to bring this up, but they, for whatever reason, they didn't want to stick with the original grant writer, who was one of the few people I know who can even handle a JAG grant. So we then were left with, we have no grant writer attached to this. So I, I called around to see if anyone else would be willing to do the JAG grant. No one. I called three different people who all had never worked with JAG grants before because they're complex. They're not easy. There are only certain people who work with these things. And if we weren't going to get to work with a grant writer who started this, then who do we work with? And so I, I placed this back into their court and I said, do you know anyone, grant writer, who can work with us on a JAG grant? They, they didn't know of anyone either. So this is not like I have held anything from you. I have been trying to learn myself for over a month what is going on with this grant, this highly complicated grant. And, and I really don't respect your saying something to the fact that I have not been trying to work with them because I have. And, you know, we can beat this dead horse and go on and on. The grant's going forward. It's going forward in the manner JAG wants it to go forward. It's going forward with the county being the fiscal agent and the grantee, which is, that's part of their contract. All, the only thing that has changed in this is the county is the fiscal agent as opposed to the city. That means the county pays all the bills upfront out of whatever pocket money they have. And then they turn around and re, get reimbursed at some point by JAG. Instead of us paying money upfront out of a line item that we would have to make, somehow make out there. And I think I said to you, it would probably be about six thousand dollars a month we would have to put out. I did not know if, if the former council could even make a line item to pay for that. And I checked on that. I'm, I'm not sure if we had six thousand dollars, but it was all, again, I have tried to work with this. And if I, if you would work with us a little bit on this, I think we could go forward and let this grant be a very good thing with the county taking care of it. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, isn't it true that a contract was presented to you to sign last week and you refused?
No, that is not true. That is absolutely not true. The contract is still has not, the final contract still has not, in fact, I sent you in your packet a draft contract that still says, it is a draft. It's not a final contract. That's all I have ever gotten. We never had one that was ready to sign. So again, there have been, there have been snags along the way because JAG has a major change. And you can call and ask them tomorrow yourself. There is a new administrator. We worked with him. He was a little bit in the dark about where this whole thing had come from. So he and I tried to, I mean, part of the, part of the role of the mayor is if you say you want the grant, we try to work with these people. And I have tried my best to work to make this happen. And then Grant, the JAG folks themselves said, the best possible way to handle this, since it's no longer a nonprofit in your community, is for the fiscal agent to be on the same level as the actual people who are getting the money. And that would be the county, who are on the same level as the county court system. So it's, it's just a cleaner business model for them. It, it, it's just a no-brainer in some ways. It's a very cleaner model and you've got two systems on the same level. You've got your county government paying money out to your county court and then being reimbursed, rather than a city paying out to a county court and then getting reimbursed. It's going forward. The only change is the county is the fiscal agent as opposed to us. Nothing else has changed in this. I, I mean, there have been a lot of maneuverings because we had to try to make this work. The language in this, this contract, I think it was changed about five times because we had to take out every reference to family and youth centers and SPOT and all of these because there would have been a conflict of interest for the original person applying for this to be getting money and be in a position beyond the council at the same time. We could not allow, y'all said that, apparently, that it couldn't go forward like that. So that's when it changed to be the court system. When Mayor Dennis then said to the judge, do you want to take this over and get your court system to set up a program for youth? And he said, yes. So anyway, I, I, just, let's give it the good graces and let it go forward and let's wish it positive things and, and just go through in a positive way with this. The county is paying, the county. It's a good deal for everybody involved. Any further discussion on this? Okay, there's...
I've got one more, if no one else, but I always just want to make sure they had the opportunity. Okay. I, I'd just like to state that we don't answer to JAG, we answer to the people of Carthage. And so my, my, I'm here to look out for the best interest of Carthage, not the best interest of what JAG decides. And that being said, you're saying that, well, can I, can I finish what I was saying?
Excuse me, you understand, it's their money, councilman. It's not, Carthage's money is, or the people of Carthage, JAG's money.
May I finish what I was saying?
Go right ahead.
You're saying that you went back and forth five times, so you were involved in five instances. And if a contract is going back and forth, could you not table that discussion and say, I would like to present this to my council before we make any decisions on this? With, with, I mean, and I'm just, I'm asking that respectfully.
Yes, sir. If you wanted to have a special call meeting, when I say went back and forth, it was literally phone calls back and forth.
It doesn't even have to be a special call meeting. It can be at the next council meeting.
Let me explain to you. When I say back and forth and back and forth, it was call to Murphysburg, to Angela Bain, it's a call to Lisa's office. It was emails back and forth, okay, would you change this language? Would you change this language? And it was all of this working at the same time. That is how a contract comes together when you have to take all the language out that referred to the former nonprofit. This was all being done by the parties involved. And at some point, if we ever got the language to where we thought it was appropriate, then yes, everybody would have seen this. And you have a copy of the last version of this. I sent it to all of you in the email. I sent you the copy of the last version of this. I sent you a copy of this letter. I sent you a copy of everything involved in this. So you have a copy of the final draft, but it's still a draft. It still has, and it will have to be changed one more time. It's not a process where I could send you every single email. You probably have forty emails back and forth. If you wanted that, I'll be glad to show you. But again, it was a process where Lisa Reese and Angela Bain and myself were going back and forth. And then Michael, Judge Collins looked at it at one point. He looked at all the complex stuff that I sent you about the Civil Rights Act, about what else is involved. Michael, there were all these things, Title Six that were involved. There were seven or eight documents that we had to somehow come up with. And Michael had to be Title Six coordinator for that. So we had, we were trying our best to get all these components together. This is not a simple grant. We were at that point, and then that's when JAG and we all started talking and said, would it not make more sense from a business model for the county to be the fiscal agent for this, the grantee? And, and JAG said, JAG said, that's a good idea and that's what they wanted to do. Yes, sir.
And that's, that's understood. There's a lot of moving parts. We don't want all the emails. And that's, we're not saying that. We're just saying if you start seeing it getting more complex, then can, can you ask them, say, hey, do, do you mind if we table this discussion till I let my council know what's going on so that they can, they can steer, help steer this forward? That, that's all I'm requesting.
Okay, I understand that. But we were trying to go for a March first start date on this. We were down to the wire a few days before that to try to get that March first start. And, and because of, all the components didn't come through, then we had to push it back to March fifteenth. And that was what we were going for. And then it really became an issue of, it really makes more sense if the county is receiving these funds on a county level, that the county should be the fiscal agent, that they should be the grantee. It would make more sense because it's a smoother business model for that to happen. And that's where it is.
And you could be one hundred percent right on that. But the fact that I'm trying to point out is that we didn't get involved, even in the aspect, if it was a March first, if it was a March first decision and you're getting this email on March seventh, then that doesn't make sense.
Let me show the minutes, if I can find it. Minutes for this. This goes back to last year. Just so I can find where these were. Okay. This goes back to council meeting May third of two thousand and eighteen. And in the minutes, it said, Mayor Dennis advised council that Barbara Knappel had received the grant provision and intervention for, intervention for at youth risk grant in the amount of two thousand six hundred and fifty, two hundred six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. This is a hundred percent grant for the duration of three years. This is 100% grant for the duration of three years. Carthage will be the fiscal agent. Well, then somewhere along the line, someone must have said, no, we can't do that because that would do conflict of interest for one of our council members to be getting this grant. So somewhere down the line, it changed and it, and it said, okay. When was this?
We're not, we're not, we're not pointing out the details. I'm pointing out-
Well, I'm just saying, there's a long history of this.
I, I understand. I think we all understand there's a long history. What we're requesting is something very simple. If you see, if there's something that's coming up that might affect a huge grant, a $200,000 grant, might want to involve the council.
You're as involved as I have been able to be involved. Again, I walked into this blindly, not knowing any of this. I, I was told there's a seven or eight grants that we have. This is one of them that we don't have a contract on it. It wasn't until about a few weeks ago that we started really picking up effort on this because the new administrator came on board. Again, this grant goes back to 2018 and the former members who were on there remember what this, you know more about it because apparently it was applied for, by one of our council members. We can't do that. We can't accept grant money as being a council member. So it had to change. Then you, the scope changed to the court system. And when that changed, that changed the whole scope of the contract. I don't want to keep reiterating this, but there have been so many changes in this. And councilman, I have tried every way as they say in here to really support and try to make this move along. And they're thanking me here for doing that. It's their money. It's their grant. They have a right to handle their grant however they'd like to handle it. The court system becomes the beneficiaries of this because Ms. Canapple's organization could not receive it. Court system's getting a really wonderful thing. They're getting $200,000 to help the at-risk youth that they choose to work with. They've got the people in line to help with this. It's, it's, it's a gold deal. So let's just give them our grace and our blessings and move forward, please, on this. Please. We've got people here waiting, we've got citizens here waiting to talk about things of interest to them. So can we move on to that, please? Thank you very much. The other final thing I'd like to talk about is we do have a really good thing coming up. It's the Ball State. We have been working together with them at the county and the Chamber of Commerce to see if we could possibly bring some classes here. This will be the first meeting to talk about that. I'd like for everybody who can be there, please be there. It's March 14th, which is the next, a week from tonight, at the Chamber of Commerce from 5:30 to 7:00. If you know anyone who might not, well, my feeling is that I would really like everybody in this county, in this, this city, if you have, to have a chance to have some higher education classes, regardless of what your ability is financially or whatever. And this might give an opportunity to some folks who might not have the wherewithal to drive to Gallatin or to drive to Murphysboro or whatever. But as you know, these grants that, from, not the grants, but the, the state now has a two-year free program going in. This would help some of the folks to get these classes and not have to drive all the way to Gallatin. Everybody who's talked about this thing is very enthusiastic about it. So I hope we'll get behind it and support it. And just tell your friends and neighbors who might like, and this also applies to adults who might be coming back, who maybe took a few classes at college, didn't finish and want to come back. That's also a free program now. So you can, you can finish your associate's degree through this thing. This will be, be just an initial discussion about what kind of classes you would like to see offered here. Somewhere down the future, it might also be technical classes that could be offered for the industries to, to train the people the way they want. But this is a brainstorming session. The folks from Ball State will be here. Please come in and bring your thoughts. One of the thoughts is that it could be through a, a thing called Zoom where you actually have a classroom set up with people there. The instructors on computers similar to Skype and you interact with them. And then at some of these classes, we'll have actual professors here. So please come, support it. Tell all your family and friends who are interested.
What time again was that?
That's 5:30 on March 14th, which is a Thursday night at the Chamber of Commerce.
It's on our Facebook page.
It's also on the Facebook.
We did a similar thing in Jackson County, not directly under Ball State, but under their umbrella through TCSCO technology. And it's scheduled to start in like two months and it's a really good program. So we need to get behind it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I'm sure it's a great program. Um, is this limited to like the town of Carthage or is this county?
Oh, no, anyone who wants to come.
Is this going to the county commission? Are they going to?
Mayor Mason is already-
Because when you said Chamber of Commerce, I saw it as a countywide thing.
Yes, he's on going with this. If you, if you say it's, it's the town of Carthage, the, the county and also the Chamber of Commerce have all lent support to this and, and so, yeah.
What about the school system? They're behind it, aren't they?
I would assume, yes.
We need to make sure they are.
Yeah, like the Board of Educators.
It's been sent out to the guidance counselors and whoever, just, just, this is just an initial. Again, this is just an initial discussion to determine what kind of classes we want to offer here. So this is a first step to have the input from all the community. So please come out if you can and support this. Uh, the only other thing is the planning commission meeting is the next Wednesday night at 5:30 here. Okay, we have a little bit of old business. We have this deal for the Water Street project. I think someone last time had made it a motion to see if Habitat would want it. And have we had a, a chance to, yes, sir?
Do we need to go into, are you done with the?
I'm sorry, you're right. Excuse me, our city, excuse me, I'm just jumping ahead. Let's have the report from the rest of our folks. I'm sorry about that. Okay, let's have the report from, oh, our city attorney, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
First thing I want to call your attention was an email that I sent to each of you that was from MTS Legal Opinion based on a motion that was tabled last council meeting that had to do with a motion regarding the, the duties of the, of the council to be able to do certain things. I trust each of you got that email, is that correct? And is there any discussion needs to occur based on her opinion that, that it would be expansion of what the, the duties are in the, in its charter? So, so the motion probably is not something in its current form needs to go forward.
He withdrew, sorry, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
He withdrew it last time at the end and during the major session.
Well, regardless, you still told, no, I thought it was council, I thought it was tabled.
We tabled it. We, we did.
He withdrew.
Did I withdraw, okay. So it'll have to be a new motion.
But I, but I do, I do call your attention to this because it is, it's a source of a continued debate or thought. You just need to look to see that your, your duties that you have, that you're doing, exercising as council are a collective, you're not an island. You're, you're a group. You're collectively around this table, exercise the duties of the city council and governing based on the, the guidelines you have set forward in your charter under that section. So I just call your attention to that as she has highlighted some of the things. And, and it's, it's some, in some respects, it's weak and in some respects, it's vague, but it's still what you gotta live by. And you just gotta govern down here around the table, you give the information the best you can. Uh, I liken it to, uh, trying to think of example where a judge makes a decision and say, well, I, I think I need to go out to do an onsite visual of what's going on here. And let's adjourn court and go out there. That doesn't happen. It does on television. It did with the ghost Mr. Chicken when Don Knotts got him to go to the haunted house. But that's not it. You just don't do that. You, you hear what you hear around the table and then you make those decisions the best you can and, and go with it. So look at that opinion for, for that guidance. The other thing that I wanted to call your attention had to do with a question that Council Lady Scott brought up in an email that she wanted to address. And I wanted, I could address it in, in this particular segment since I'm, I'm city attorney. She, she talked about the question and I won't put words in her mouth. So if it's all, we yield to her to pose the question, I'll respond to it.
My question was in regards to retaining outside counsel. Just given certain instances in the last few months where the council has voted one way and the mayor's office has seen fit to act in an opposing manner or to ignore the wishes of the council. It's my opinion that puts the city attorney in a position where he has conflicting directions. He's told by one office to do one thing, by another office to do another thing. He can't do both things. We've also been opened as a city to potential liability for legal action against us. You know, the memorandum of understanding with the county was canceled in such a manner that they had entered into contracts to begin building a pipeline. They've had to breach those contracts because they're no longer building that pipeline. So it is fully possible that the county could be suing the city at some point, in which case we would need outside counsel. So at some point, we may need to retain outside counsel. And I think that needs to be discussed. Um, of course, the city attorney can, you know, let us know if he feels we are at that point yet, if he feels comfortable moving forward with the war infections within the city at this point and give his advice moving forward.
I do need to address your, your comment about the memorandum of understanding. Um, and I, I have something in my office. I'll be glad to bring it in. We have a, what's called a permit with T-Det. We also have our municipal codes. We also have several of those things. I think I've put on the table there, uh, the letter I sent to Mr. Mason after he told us he was going to find a different way. They were asked to, to do a profile of what they were bringing into our sewer system and it was going into the Cumberland River. It had a template of about 10, 12, 15 things on it. Two months later, they still not had, had not received, we had not received that. We did, Mr. Steve did his own profile, just of four things, and all of them were over the limits for what we could do. I'm saying that that MOU, and, and I have someone who wrote a decision about this, went in, it was, it was in violation of the permit that we have with the state. The permit with the state says nothing can come into that landfill unless it's been pre-treated and with an industrial pretreatment program and has been tested to see what's coming in. None of that had been done when that MOU was, was, was signed. And to boot, this, this had been, well, I'm just saying, you're saying-
This isn't her question at all. This is a rabbit trail.
Okay, but I'm just, I'm replying to what you're saying, but MOU was not even a legal document.
We're not even talking about, we're talking about the fact of-
Okay, let's, let's proceed.
We're talking about the fact of getting other legal counsel because of the conflicting interest.
We cannot be sued for something that was not legal to begin with.
Well, let's go back to your question. You, you think there's possibility or potential that it'll be a legal counsel? I respectfully disagree. I wear the hat of the city attorney for the town of Carthage at this time. I represent the interest of the city of Carthage, which collectively should be both the city council and the mayor. Apparently that's not the case right now because you're not on the same page. But the reality is I've not seen or done anything that caused me concern about ethics as to who, who my, I count to. I was hired by, by, uh, well, I, I don't know who I was hired by, to tell you the truth.
It's been a long time ago.
I've been down here a long time and, but the mayor approached me to ask me to serve, whether it was endorsed by the city council before or after, I have no idea because I wasn't privy to that. But the reality is my, my role is, is to advise the city. And to that extent, my regular operations has to do with me talking to the mayor because that's who, who I have regular conversations with when there's an issue comes up. Because she's the CEO of this, this operation. To the extent that there are issues come before the, the council around the table that need to be addressed and the council collectively wants me to do that, that's fine. I don't feel conflicted at all, at all, period, no question, about anything that I do or say or have done with respect to what the council says, what the mayor says. So I don't see the need, period. It's, it's highly, it's highly irregular as far as I'm concerned. Is there possibility of a suit? There's always possibility of a suit. Is that, that Sabre venrattle? No, not to me. The other side of coin is regardless of what they did or didn't do, you still had an option to opt out in 30 days. Contract called for that, the memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Bass, if I can ask you a question, because you're, you're also saying you make a, you collectively serve the city council or the mayor, but also you recognize us only as a collective. So if we have individual questions, um, and I know that I, I had come to you in November having a question and, and what you had told me and was that you serve at the pleasure of the mayor. And so to me, I just, that, that, I think that confuses us because like we, she can do independent research basically and ask you and use you for independence research, but I can't. And for me to make an informed decision, I can't make all my decisions and my fact finding at this table. I've got to go out and talk to constituents. I've got to go out and look at things. I've got to go into facilities and see what's being done and if, and, and-
Respectfully, you may, but, but right now the legal authority says you can't.
But, and that's another thing I'm going to point out to the council is MTS is not a governing body. It's not an elected body, nor is it a legal body. It's a pro-government advisory board put together basically to make the government feel more comfortable about itself. That's what MTS is. We're elected. We represent the city of Carthage. And then again, as you were talking about, the judge is making an onsite recommendation. Well, there's also jury nullification. That's basically where we go out and we could, we can make decisions as a city and that, we don't, we don't, we don't sit at the altar of MTS. They're an advisory board. We can still make decisions without that. And for the fact that I put it, I wanted to put a memorandum together where I've got city employees who are scared for their jobs and scared to give me facts. And like you were saying, as far as water levels, I've still got a request in to get water levels from the city. I can't even take a picture of a bottle of water in my water treatment plant because you've put a ban on that. That is an issue and I'm going to challenge that whether MTS says so or not.
Mr. Cole, evil, please. There is no ban on you. No one has ever stopped you from going into the water plant or the sewer plant.
Taking pictures of water.
We have simply asked that you have the courtesy that I or anyone else would have, make an appointment in advance. But yes, we are not allowed, I'm not allowed, no one, that's a federally secure system.
I'm not allowed to take a picture of the water that goes in my body.
You're not allowed to take pictures inside of a federally secured facility, which is our water plant and our sewer plant.
And back to-
Try going into Nashville and asking them to do that. It's, you can't do it. If I-
I have done it.
Well.
And I've been doing it. I have been taking pictures in all these facilities until two months ago, when you specifically told me not to.
Was there not a lock gate with the signs that said this is a federally secured system, facility?
No, there's no sign that says this is a federally secured system.
After 9/11, every water and power and sewer plant in this country is locked and fenced because of that. Now, they had told you numerous times that you are more than welcome to make an appointment and come when they're not in the middle of trying to do their work and they'll be glad to talk to you. They had tour groups of kids who come through, they make an appointment to come through. I understand you, you want to try to test this and that's fine. But our facilities are working really hard to do what they do for our city.
They do, but up until two months ago-
Why to put them on the line as if they're not doing that?
Why am I, why, why are we not, why, why are we not allowed to?
I have a question, please.
Okay, you called the question or what are we doing on this?
Just go back to that again because we've been all of that stuff.
That's another issue that need to be taken up. But the, the question that she had was about representation. And the fact that the city mayor works as he stated at the pleasure of the mayor, which is pretty clear-cut in our opinion, means we don't have representation.
That's not, may I say, in, in our charter, we have a city attorney. That city attorney gives legal advice to the city. I happen to be the CEO, the mayor of the city, so I get a lot of that legal advice. And you're here gathered as a council, this is where your authority comes as a council. You liberate together, you vote together. And MTS, I'm sorry, but our training, that's who helps write all of our codes and everything. MTS has told us over and over again, when the council comes here, you have the legal authority to make recommendations, to vote, to make legislation. When you go out on your own, you're the same as any other citizen. So you cannot demand that people do things because you're a councilperson outside of this council. In this council, you have the legal authority to do whatever you want and vote however you want. But it, it has just, and Mr. Petty, you were there the night that Mr. Jacob reiterated that to you and, and whoever else was there. I believe Mr. Reese was there, I was there.
That was it.
Attorney Bass was there. This question came up and he reiterated, in this room, you as a council have legal authority to do whatever you choose to vote on. And while you're here, this is the gentleman who gives us legal opinion and advice.
Let me go back, Mayor, if you don't mind, to the issue.
Okay.
And I respectfully disagree with Councilman Petty. I, I'm the city attorney and, and I'm the, I'm the person you look to for decision. Now, can you call me up and, and say, I want you to research this? You can do it, but I won't do it. And I won't do it simply because, for two reasons. Number one, I work, work out a direction of this group and the mayor, not a single individual. And I won't do it simply because, for two reasons. Number one, I work, work out a direction of this group and the mayor, not a single individual council. Number two, it's a budget issue. If I was on something other than a retainer, which I'm not, but if I was on a retainer, something over a retainer, you'd work me to death, 'cause I, I could be subject to doing six, six different opinions from, from different counseling or councilpersons. So it's, it's not one of those situations where you, you get to pick and choose, uh, uh, what you want me to research, 'cause that's not gonna happen. Uh, uh, but if the council looks at me and has the decision, and you say, uh, what do you say, say about that? Can you give us research? I'll do it if the council wants it. Collectively, individually, that's not gonna happen on my watch. Now, let's go back to, to another issue. If you. I, I said, made the statement, I've made it probably several times, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor. I do that simply because of my past history. I've been down here twice. First time was about eighteen months under, um, Mayor B. M. Low. Uh, after he retired, uh, the next mayor came in, he was, his decision was he wanted another attorney. Well, I don't know if he, he went through the council on that or not, uh, but he said he wanted another attorney, and I just assumed I, I was, uh, uh, serving his pleasure. The, the, so I resigned, or maybe I was, uh, uh, well, forced to, or I don't know, it doesn't matter. But anyway, I resigned, and then came back after Mr. Dan, so. So, so there's a long history of, of just three attorneys serving this, this role for probably forty-five plus years. So there's not a lot of precedent as to who, who does what. Uh, but anyway, when I got back down here, I, I assumed that, I don't know for a fact, but I assumed the ma- mayor, then Mayor Bowman said, uh, we gotta hire an attorney. Y'all were telling me we're getting Davis Bass or whoever, so here I am, and have been for twenty-plus years, and to second extent. I looked at the charter, and the charters, it doesn't give us a lot of help. If you take the position that the charter, uh, defines my job as a, as an office, which I don't know if it does or not, uh, then, then the council collectively with the mayor can, can hire me. Or fire me if that matter. So, uh, it, it, it doesn't say a lot, but obviously you have the right to hire somebody, and how you hire somebody, I, I have no idea. Based on the chart, it says, uh, such person shall hold office at will of the council, shall be paid compensation. Uh. They shall also elect it, uh, at time to time, chief police and such other officers or supervisors that deem necessary. And my officer or supervisor, I don't know. Uh, but it says they, and they apparently, apparently means the council and the mayor. So collectively, I would hope that, that that becomes a decision that you can, can agree upon. If not, then I guess, uh, you can agree to disagree, but ultimately, somebody's gotta say, yes, uh, I want so-and-so to be the attorney. So, uh, but to answer your question, I, I, or maybe you didn't answer the question, but you said, uh, I've said that I serve at the pleasure of the mayor. I think I probably do over the years, 'cause that's just been my course of conduct. But again, that's never been an issue until now, uh, uh, for, for at least my twenty-two plus years. But regardless of all that, it matters not to me, because as I've told the mayor a couple of weeks ago at least, I've decided to step down as city attorney. So y'all can cross the bridge now, because I'm not gonna be your city attorney. Uh, I told her as of April the first, unless you hire somebody before then. So I think that my, my decision to, to, uh, step away is, is, uh, not lightly taken, and I've decided that several weeks ago. And I just told her a couple of weeks ago, and I told her I'd reveal it to you tonight, so, so drop the bomb, here it is. So, uh, it, I would hope that you, you would not get bogged down by the decision about who you hire. I think the mayor certainly is known and tried to come up with some ideas about, uh, who to hire, because you need to, to, but, uh, there's bigger issue and bigger fish to fry than, than what we're talking about here. So let's get beyond that, or y'all get beyond that. I'm gonna go to the house with my remote recliner. But, uh, still gonna practice, and don't get me wrong. I just got too much going on in my street to do this.
So i- if, if I might ask you a question, since you're, um, how would we, because you were talking, you're not sure how it's defined, if you're an officer or supervisor, on the next city attorney, what is your, what is your opinion of how that, that person is hired? Is it hired by the council, or is it hired by the mayor?
Could, could we also define that it's not an employee that we hire?
No, it's not an employee.
It's a contracted person.
Just like your professional, just like your engineer, just like your accountant. Uh, typically, the engineering accountant, uh, over the years, there's been, uh, somebody makes a motion to, uh, probably the mayor has suggested, you know, use this, use that person, and to make the motion and pass it, go on. Uh, with respect to the, to the city attorney, I don't know. I mean, our history tells us it's just sort of informal. Uh, the mayor calls, the mayor's the one that's gonna make the, the, just make the contact to whoever the person is and say, you're gonna work for the city. And if so, uh, uh, you know, come aboard, if you reach an agreement with the person. Uh, who hires? I think according to this, when it says they, if you take the position that, that the attorney is a, a officer and supervisor, which I don't know if they are or not, I, I have my doubts. Uh. You, you, it's a collective decision. I would hope that you would not get bogged down by this, because it's not that, it's, it, there's a lot more to govern than just getting bogged down on who you're gonna hire as city attorney.
And if I may interject, in our personnel policy, the attorney, accountants, there's several people who are listed that are just contracted personnel. And they're not employees, they are ten ninety-nines that we just, I, I would, did you have a question?
Yeah, who does it? I mean, I'm confused now.
In the past, what do you say?
Past, the mayor, the mayor's contacted me with the times that I've come, and that, that doesn't mean that the mayor has not had advice and consent of the council. I have no idea.
So just to make it a little simpler terms, you'd say that the mayor would find someone and then bring it before the council, and the council would make a vote on it?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Is that, is that everyone's understanding here?
Yes, we, and again, because this is.
It's not something we've crossed very much in forty-five plus years, just three times.
I, I will say that because I've just recently found out about this, I have reached out to a couple of people just to see if they're even interested. Because first of all, you have to have experience in municipal law, and not everybody has that. So I've reached out to a few people, and they've said, no, we don't have that experience, and, and we, we really, we have our practice and whatever. There is one person I reached out to who I think would be excellent in this, who's practiced here in town for a huge number of years. She and her husband have both been municipal attorneys in different, uh, cities around here and has that experience. Um, it would be someone I would be willing to just even throw out now for you to consider, and, and that is, um, uh, Ms. Debbie Holloman. And she and her husband both have been municipal attorneys.
Now, let me back up. I think, I, I know Guy has, I'm not sure Debbie has.
She, she has, she said, I think, in Redwall's rooms.
Okay, I'm standing for it.
And, um.
Sit for it.
And they have actually done tax work for different, uh, places around, I believe. Uh, I, I think anyone who knows the Hollmans, they'll have the, they have a wonderful practice here. I think they would be excellent people to advise us in this kind of thing, and that's someone I would bring to the table in a heartbeat to, to be our.
If I could, I'd make the motion to hire tomorrow.
Okay, I, I, that's exactly how I, would, do you have any thoughts or objections to if we?
Yes, you may.
I talked to her just, just briefly, as I have several people to see if she had any background in that, if she had any interest in it, and she seemed enthusiastic about that. Yes, sir.
I think that needs to be something that needs to be on the agenda for last, for next month. I'm not opposed to, uh, discussing it.
And we'd be glad to.
I think we need, that's a major issue that we need to have on the agenda next month.
Put that on the agenda. Again, remember, we only have this attorney, so we may be in a lapse of having attorneys by then.
I'm, I'm planning on saying that, that April the first or, or before, if you wanna hire somebody, if you wanna have a special call meeting to hire somebody, but I'd like to be out here April the first.
I, I, I agree with Councilman Petty that this is a, I mean, this is a pretty big decision. I don't think we should rush this decision. I think, you know, the whole council should, and, uh, Councilwoman Knappel should be involved to be able to make this decision.
Could we not to have a lapse in attorney? Could we say that we would have a special call meeting just for this purpose? Would that be okay? I, I, otherwise, we're gonna have a lapse. Okay, where, where's the calendar? What's the, what's the next?
Get my calendars out.
Two weeks out. So where's your? For the fourth. How about if we get it on the eighteenth? Would that give us enough time? Would that give y'all enough time?
Hold on. I've got four calendars. Hang on a second, I'm sorry.
It's a Monday night?
Actually, that's a Thursday. We could have it on the.
Eighteenth would be a Monday.
What time?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking, eighteenth, okay, that is. I don't have my calendar in front of me.
I could do eighteen.
I could do eighteenth if it's, uh, six-thirty.
Six-thirty, eighteen.
Thirty, and the twenty-first would be better.
That would be a Thursday. Is that better for y'all?
What time though? Yeah, I have.
Can you do it, you wanna do it at five or five-thirty?
We do it five Thursday.
Okay, what about five o'clock on Thursday?
Thursday, on the twenty-first. Okay, that's better.
I can, I can do the twenty-first. I can do that. Five o'clock.
Everyone good with five?
Do you, for purposes of making sure you're able to move forward, do, do you want to suggest any other names to the, to the mayor to talk to? I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about Debbie Holloman, I mean, I think she'd do fine.
And again, keep in mind, if, uh, we need someone with municipal law background.
Well, you don't. I didn't start with it.
Well, all right, but I'm saying, you know, come on, are willing.
I've got two, but I've, uh, I have not approached them, 'cause obviously this is, uh, news to me as of ten minutes ago.
I would need to discuss these people, to pull their names out.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the thing, yeah, I think it'd be better to discuss. I, I, I'm with you, uh, just to see.
Just to throw out, it'd be handy if you could have someone here locally, only because it's easier to call on those people.
Do you wanna have interested parties submit a letter of interest with their qualifications or anything?
We're not hiring them, so that's, it's, it's just we're contracting someone.
I don't think it would hurt.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, we can do that. All right. So then we need to put it in the paper.
Special meeting and.
Okay. All right, our next report would be from.
There's nobody begging me to stay on. What is this?
We'll give you a special send out.
No, no.
We'll give you a gold watch, okay, for, what, twenty-two years? My gosh.
You made that couch and that remote sound pretty appealing.
Twenty-two years, I mean, at least let's explain. We, we may, we may have you a cake next week or something. We'll figure that one out. No, we seriously appreciate, that's, that's. And I know we overpaid you, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll bring my checkbook and write a refund.
There you go, there you go. Okay, um, so our department, uh, do we have anything from Ms. Teresa, local on water department?
I don't have a lot. I just wanted to say we did send out the follow-up letters on the, um, THM problem we had on Riverside. And the aggressive flushing program has helped. The numbers have been, well, we just got our latest results from this quarter, and they were down to oh-four-eight-one, where the MCO is oh-eight-o. So.
Wonderful.
Where it's, it, I just wanted to commend that department that's doing that flushing, 'cause it's working.
Wonderful, thank you.
Can you explain the, uh, aggressive flushing program for everybody, so they kind of, I, I know I've, I've had a lot of constituents ask about that, and I was trying to explain the aggressive flushing to them.
Well, THMs, it's explained in the letter. It's, it's a natural, it's dissection byproduct that's from the natural organics in the water reacting with chlorine. And you have to keep the, the lines out in the system flushed and moving, so you don't have stagnant water, basically, 'cause that's what causes the problem. This was a dead-end line that was not getting adequate flushing, and they added a hybrid there and been flushing more, and, and the numbers have been going down. That was our problem all along. But that's. Liz might can tell you more about flushing, 'cause it's his department.
That's pretty good right there.
That's basically what they do. They just, you know, they just keep all the, the water moving from the, the paint all the way out through the system.
So we're basi- we're just, we're starting to flush a lot more to solve that problem? Okay.
Yes, and that, and we've seen the results, good results, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. A report from Mr. Steve.
I really don't have anything. Uh, since I found out Attorney Bass is leaving, I'd like to thank him for always helping me whenever I needed information or some legal advice. This stuff going on, and I appreciate what you've always done for us, and, and I'll miss you.
The trip's gonna pour in.
But I really don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, police department?
Mayor, I don't have much. Uh, I wanna just kinda say thank you to Mr. Bass. Every time I have a legal question or something like that, it's always easy for you to email him, give him a call, and he will come forward with a direction and helps us out, so. Really, if you hire, I, I hope and pray that I'd be able to help out just as much, and shed some light on some things too, just as much as he has for us in the little amount of time that I've been chief, and, uh, so thank you for that. And, um, just one other quick note, uh, in case anybody's not aware, we've got at least one new business opening up. Uh, recently, there's a holistic place in town that's gonna be opening up right down the street. I think they're gonna be selling some CBD products and some, I don't know if it's gonna be any kind of hemp products or not or anything like that. But this is a new type of business that's gonna be opening up all over Tennessee. Uh, it's a whole new world, I guess you could say. Probably something that the council may wanna look at at some point in time in the future. Maybe there's gonna be, have to be some restrictions in place, kinda like the alcohol has. I don't know if that's something y'all wanna discuss at some point in time in the future, but I definitely think it's something that we should all even, you know, make sure that we take note of and understand that this stuff's gonna be here. It's not going anywhere. So we have to make sure that we're paying attention to what, you know, we have in our communities and stuff. Not saying it's bad, but we have to make sure, know, you know, we have in our communities, so.
Just out of curiosity, is there an age limit?
I mean, what I understand, as of right now, the state of Tennessee has no age limit for anybody wanting to buy hemp. So if somebody wants to go to a place that sells hemp and buys it, and they're a fifteen, sixteen-year-old, they can do it.
Tennessee Hemp Association is working on lobbying a bill to get through that puts an age limit on it, but right now, who, correct, there is no age limit. Um, also additionally, there's no, uh, the way it is, it's, it's an agricultural product, because it's an agricultural product, it's not under the jurisdiction of cities, counties, or federal government, it's under the jurisdiction of the state and the state alone. So therefore, we can't necessarily do anything, but if anybody has questions about hemp, I've pretty much, like, just got a doctorate the past, like, eight weeks on it, so I'm more than happy to answer any concerns on it, but you're.
My biggest concerns are is that we're gonna be having underage kids come down here and go into these shops and buying stuff like that, and I'm not in favor of that, so.
There are rare cases on, available, uh, where, uh, not only just kids, but adults have overindulged, so to speak, and have, have tested positive. And it puts y'all in a bad li- I mean, in a bad situation.
Nothing negative of it. I'm not saying anything negative of it. I'm just saying, as a community as a whole, we need to understand and know what's in our community and know and pay attention to what's in our community.
Absolutely.
And if there's, just like everything, we have to pay attention to it and make sure that we're understanding of it, concerns, like you said, your constituents and stuff. You know, I'm pretty sure people, parents and stuff, aren't gonna wanna make sure that these juveniles and stuff are coming down and buying some hemp or some CBD stuff, coming home with it, and hey, it looks like marijuana. Well, it's not, it's hemp. How are parents gonna know that?
Looks, looks the same, smells the same, everything looks exactly the same.
So concerns that I think the council needs to be aware of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have chief?
No.
Hi, here, no, okay, uh, paper courts, Mr. Lasky.
I'm sure y'all noticed all the brush that fell out on the streets, uh, it's been all brushed on north of the landfill, nobody did. So we need to figure out what we're gonna do with it.
Have we put a notice in the paper about that?
Uh, I understand we have, Michael.
I think we have. It's on Facebook and the webpage. I'll double-check him. I'm sure it was sent to the paper.
And, and in our discussions, it, it may be that we will have to purchase a chipper for, for, because the, as you probably all know, the landfill can't take this anymore because they've gotten fined by T. Dec for burning it up there. They won't take it from anyone. So it may, at some point, we may have to make a choice to buy chipper for the, the county or the city and, um, go for that.
Gotta find a place to dump it.
Well, in the past, Sabra, Ms. Hodge.
We used, well, contract where we used to dump it.
And, and they did chip it for a while under Mayor Hodges, and I think they even sold it, um, to some of the, the folks from around the county. So we'll, we'll have to discuss this more, but yes, we have to find, uh, a solution to this, because again, no one in the county can take brush up there anymore.
People still put it out.
Yeah, yeah. And we've, we've looked at, we've looked at, we've looked at a price, some shippers haven't you? What kind of price range are they?
About a thousand dollars, and that's for a used one.
Okay, okay, so we'll, we'll just have to.
I mean, they're expensive brands.
Yeah, so this is something that we'll need to talk about and look at some numbers soon on that, okay.
Or, this is over, I know it's not budget time, but I got a truck going down, a service truck. Michael's got all the information on it right there. It's a two thousand, and it's on the second transmission, and I can see, it's fixing to go out again, and it's using oil. It's a two thousand, and it's on the second transmission, and I just, it's just gonna go out again, it's using oil, and it's got a water leak. It's got a hundred fifty thousand miles on it. I will buy a new service truck.
Okay.
I know it is. But, I, that's why I brought it up now. April the fourth is the deadline for state bid for Chevrolet.
Okay.
After April the fourth, the two thousand twenty comes out. It cost us more. This will be a two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so would you repeat that so we can know what we're? Did, did you, did you, did y'all have the chance to hear? The, the bid is by April fourth, so please repeat what you just said.
I just meant turn it in.
What, what would this cost?
What Michael's writing right there.
Thirty-seven, two ninety-eight sixty, that is state bid.
That's the lowest you can get.
Have we looked it up, buying used vehicles?
That's what I got, got my own, boards.
I mean, the reason I'm saying is, uh, I mean, I, I know this isn't our money to spend, this is taxpayers' money and so, but I try to spend it as if I would and, um, I would never buy a new vehicle, basically, and I get, I get the appeal of it, but also, um, good maintenance on a used vehicle can save taxpayer money for the bid. Um, so I, I would say, I mean, I, I get that it's going down, but also, you know, maybe looking at some used vehicles that, you know, got a good track record. Hundred, hundred thousand miles on a vehicle ain't too bad on it.
Yeah, but it wore out when we got it.
I agree with your problem. I appreciate the problem. Our problem is that I don't make, think that we don't have, you know, we came to this meeting not knowing about this situation. And we will not have a regular meeting until after that deadline, so.
That's the reason why I do it.
I don't know what to do.
Well, we have the special call meeting.
Add it to the agenda?
If we can add it to the agenda. That's what we're gonna get to.
Prices on used trucks and present that in addition to this on the twenty first.
Yep.
Okay, that's a great idea, okay.
Make sure that now, notice includes both those items.
That's all I have. All your truck.
Why not?
You wanna add the chipper in there too?
No, chipper. What?
Chipper.
We, I mean, I'm not a fan of the chipper. Seems like a bad idea.
Unless somebody knows it's a great sinkhole, we can dump, start dumping this in. We're up. Okay, the next, the next, the next is from, um, Mr. Ray.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
City recorder.
Um, did you guys have a chance to read over the stuff on benefits administration that I sent? Basically what it is, is they're asking us to officially opt in or opt out for retiree coverage of benefits if an employee retires from the city. I have heard two different stories from this, one of which is we will be liable for the premiums if someone retires. Whenever, you can retire at sixty or thirty years. If you retire at that time, we will be responsible for your health insurance premiums until you get age sixty-five. I got a call from, um, town of Gainesboro today. She actually talked to the director of benefits administration, who advised that all this is, is allowing the retiree to have access to our current coverage, and that the employee would actually be liable for the premiums, not the city or the town. But that is not how any of the documentation that they have been sending out over the last few months reads. Um, the way that I've read it and the town of South Carthage and the town of Barnesville as well, is that the city would be responsible for those premiums, depending on when they retire. If someone retires now that has the time served, they could, we could spend ten years paying their insurance premiums. With that being said, right now, we average about seven thousand dollars a year per employee for health insurance premiums. So I need you guys to vote yea or nay to opt in or opt out, and we have to have this back to the state by the end of the month, so.
I read correctly, if we opt in now, we can still opt out at a later date, right?
Yes, but if you opt out, you cannot opt in. Yeah.
When do they need the deadline on this for?
March thirty-first.
So we could opt in now, and then if we find out we are liable.
Opt out at a later date.
Opt out later.
But if you opt out now, we're done.
Or can you get a definitive clarification from the state instead of getting through?
I can. It, it's hard to get someone to give me that, but I will try if that's what you guys want me to do.
How many current employees we got on the healthcare?
Thirty.
Right now, right now, it's thirty? And how many are we looking at over the next twenty years?
Twenty years, I don't know, but over the next ten years, I can name probably seven or eight.
Okay, seven or eight. My, my concern too is on the, I, I read through all this, and again, I'm, I'm not an attorney, and I, I want, yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to, before I voted on it, um, be able to talk to an attorney on, on this and get a, get a better opinion, um.
I'm gonna hear another agenda item for the twenty first.
That's what I feel like.
Can you talk to somebody in the state between here and then?
I will. I'll make an appointment to the fire pit guy down there. Cause all, every, every town that I have talked to has been in agreement that everyone would opt out. But that being said, it's like I just told Councilman Abel, it's about clear as mud, so.
You're saying everybody has said to opt out?
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at two hundred and ten K.
Potentially.
Potentially, plus another fifty-six K over the next ten years, um, that we'd wanna decide and make a clear decision. I'd say, yeah, it'd be better to put us on another, that big amount.
So we're gonna add this to the agenda. Okay, so tell us again, so far, what is on that agenda coming up for the?
Uh, we have the, the, the attorney, the benefits, and the truck purchase.
Can, can we also request that you, as soon as you find out from the state, you send that information to all of us? Is that where we can make a better informed decision?
Something like that, I requested in an email for a paper trail and I'll forward it.
Okay.
What time is that on twenty first?
Five o'clock.
Okay, um, we, under unfinished business, we have the Water Street property. Uh, we've had a chance to look over and think about what we, as Habitat had a chance to consider if they would be interested in.
Not in the board, because we haven't met since then, to what we have at one meeting, but it was consumed by other issues and we didn't, I didn't realize we had. I'd, I'd gotten the impression we were gonna have a public meeting and, and I did not officially, uh, ask them, but I'll be glad to bring it up next week at, at the meeting.
It was discussed, but no one specified a date or time last month, so we didn't schedule it.
So would you like to add this to the agenda for our special call?
It, it's fine, me, I, I mean, I, obviously Habitat appreciates any, any courtesies that you have in consideration of, uh, donating land. And, and obviously, we've had a good partnership over the years by turning in unused city property into taxpayer, uh, uh, the homes for that bring in tax revenue and property taxes and get families home. Uh, but I just need to make sure that, you know, it's, it's a good deal for Habitat too, to, the lo- location and, and more importantly, the, uh, the contour of the land and so forth. So I'll be glad to address it with the board next week and then come back to you on the, on the twenty first.
Are we donating?
Councilman.
This being an issue, for once, doesn't have a deadline that we have to meet, uh, should we not consider putting it back to the regular meeting and giving us more time to talk to other people?
Sure.
I mean, we, I don't think we're on a agenda to absolutely have to jump on this particular one for that meeting.
Maybe do like a five-thirty before the six o'clock for the public.
And if you have some public hearing, I'd like to have that.
We'll add it as a unfinished business item to the next meeting then, okay?
Table to our next one.
I just make, come back on the, if we'll meet.
That's right, we won't let you go. You gotta come back.
There you go.
So, public, public forum, uh, at five-thirty?
Do we want a public forum? How about this? Do you want that?
For next month.
For next month, yeah, for next month.
Hey, you're talking about the, not the lot that was received last year, but the lot right beside it.
That's what I was asking, if we were doing both or just the one?
I thought we were including both of them.
Yeah, both of them, yeah.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion that we have a public forum? Is that what it means?
Motion, motion, motion.
Okay, second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will have a public forum.
All right, table this one next month and the public meeting at five-thirty prior to.
Right, okay, um, actually, unfinished business, uh, Mr. Bremen was gonna be here from the Colson Boys Day, but he's not here. So we moved to new business, which is the Elm Street neighbors, who would like to speak with us about, um, and I sent, I sent that information to you. They're having problems, ongoing problems with, uh, I call them buzzards, vultures in their neighborhood. Who from your group would like to speak to? Yes, ma'am. Oh, by the way, before the board, we have some leadership group here. And I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you, but this is part of the Smith County Youth Leadership Group, and we'd like to welcome you here. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Now, uh, who, who would this, yes, ma'am, and would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Jessica Klaus.
Okay.
I live at one-one-two Elm Street, and, um, we have lived here in Smith County since two thousand eleven. That's when we moved here. We moved into our current house in two thousand and twelve. When we first moved, we're, there was a very small vulture, buzzard, whatever, however you wanna identify them. Their technical name is the turkey vulture. There is a very small population of them.
If you, excuse me, I've got the pictures. Did you bring them with you?
I, I assumed you had, but you sent them, so I figured everybody would see them.
Motion to recess real quick.
I'm a motion for a coffee pot in the middle of the table.
You sent me these pictures. I didn't know if you would bring them or not, but, um. It's, it's the same thing I forwarded to y'all. I think they put together, uh, there's a petition that you, you sent us, and I sent, I forwarded that to y'all. I think there's twenty-three names on here.
Yes, ma'am.
And y'all, you all have a copy that is forwarded to this, and these are the pictures that you sent, um, rather frightening in a way. This is a picture of the type of vulture we're talking about.
Yep.
But this is their neighborhood, and if, if, I know this is tiny, but you can see there's, it's like a hundred of them.
One in the middle with the one on the street. That's just, I mean, when you wake up in the morning, that's not what you wanna see.
And they're perching, and this is Brother Gentry's house, is that right? And they've torn up the roof in that house, is what I'm, okay.
So when we first moved here, there was very little, a, a small population, I would say maybe like fifteen or so that would hang around. Over the years, they have multiplied. I'm sure they have bred and they have multiplied. Um, and now we, some days, we can see hundreds of them out there. Some mornings I wake up scared to death because it sounds like somebody is walking across the roof, and it is really just about, I don't know, twenty vultures walking across the roof. And it is, it's scary. Um, they normally show up sometime between six and nine AM. Um, I have a theory that it has something to do with the landfill, that maybe possibly when the employees show up there and then they all move. And they all come over behind, like, we have the basin behind our house, uh, which I guess is the flood plain that's back there. And so they all come back there. We got all the trees back there. They roost in the trees, they'll roost on the roofs, um, they'll get on the, the ground there. They don't care. They'll go wherever. Um, and then, you know, they'll hang out, some of them will fly away, some will come back, um, but they also come around four and six. And you can see them circling. I'm sure you guys, everybody has seen them circling in the sky. They just circle and circle, and then they'll come roost. And then, um, the other day, Jimmy said that they were, there was like a hundred of them out there, and when he walked outside, he could feel the flutter of their wings as he walked outside. They were that close to us. Um, they roost on the roofs, they do damage to the roofs. Their droppings contain diseases. Um, and they're, it's messy, it's gross. Uh, we have a child, and we really do not want him around any of this. Uh, we've tried to get them to go away. Uh, we go, Jimmy goes out there a lot of times and he bangs on the table, because you're not allowed to shoot these creatures, because they are protected. So nobody, nobody shoots them. Um, and like I said, there is, we really think it has something to do with the landfill. Like, it's like free food for them. They go and they eat, and then they get scared away and they come over to us. And then they go back, and they come back, and it's just a back and forth. And, um, we have a lot of neighbors here with me today to stand up and say that we really would like something to be done of this, please.
Okay, we have, I have contacted, uh, sent your information over to, to Mayor Mason, and, um, I was told that actually, because apparently this has been going on for a couple of years. I had no idea of this, that they did get a kill permit from the National Regional Wildlife Association in, in Atlanta, and they have been shooting some there at the landfill. There, this of course is not done, has not done away with the problem, and we're being told now that probably they need to cover more over there with like, because there are carcasses and things, but they are working on, I have been told by them, they're working on their end to try to, whatever's attracting these buzzards to the landfill, and apparently has been doing for several years. Again, I was not aware until you brought this information to me. There's, they say they're trying to work on their end, but I certainly understand, and we're gonna stay, stay on top of this, and I hope the whole council will, because I'm now getting phone calls from other parts of the city. As you know, the landfill is just right across the road. So these creatures, apparently out on Jackson, the roads that are at the end of Jackson Avenue there, they're getting some in there, and there are trees there. So, yes, I'm so glad you made this aware of us, aware of this, and we will be working, trying to cooperate with the county to whatever they need to do at the landfill to prevent these buzzards from, uh, feasting there, apparently is what they're doing. Yes, sir.
Who's got the kill permit?
The, the people of the county.
The county does? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, what I was suggesting, and I, and I want the county to keep shooting as often as they can, we need, I, I had no idea this was going on. And we need to get it resolved as quickly as possible and have, and have them keep shooting. But I think we need to make a call probably tomorrow, tomorrow to Wildlife Resources and, and maybe even EPA, probably EPA also. And get them on this and see if they can help speed up the process.
And Mr. Bob Lowery, who is our regional.
Game warden.
Game warden is aware of this, and he's part of the, the group. In fact, the, the city had also, uh, licensed.
We had a permit that expired in two thousand fourteen.
So that's how long this has been going on?
Permit to do what? Kill?
De- de-creditation permit.
It's a, if you shoot within the city, it would only be a qualified person like a police officer who could do that. But there was a permit to do that, but it apparently expired.
You could do it.
So apparently this is going, it's been going on at least since two thousand fourteen. Again, I was not aware of this.
Might be twenty-five back then or something, and you were to hang the carcasses up as you killed them to hopefully run the rest of them off. That's what it says.
I also have spoken to the woman in, in Atlanta, and she's going to send us a renewal for our permit here. The county has to renew their permit by the end of this month, I'm tell, I'm being told. So they all were renewed about the same time. Uh, but you're right, we have to eradicate, yes, sir, did you, mister?
In two thousand and fourteen, the problem she's talking about for the water plant was way worse than, than what you had. I actually counted four hundred at the water plant during the winter, the head snow of that year.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, that's what we're talking about. Right, and they moved over a little bit, but the numbers, the numbers were way greater than they're explaining then. And Chief Hogan, when he had that permit, I think he killed a couple. He did leave the carcasses laying.
Yeah.
There where our, our dog pens are. And it did work. They did leave.
Hmm.
But, but, and he had to come up there maybe, uh, a couple times a week and fire some shots, so run them off, but eventually it worked.
Did he hang them or did he leave them on the ground?
He left them on the ground.
Well, they ate their own. They, this one got shot over where we live, and they left it, and they ate it.
They, they did not eat these.
They ate this one that was seen.
We had one, actually, uh, I don't know if Chad was moaning. We had one that got a lacerated up there. Remember that?
Well, that brings up a subject, because the lady in Atlanta did send an email today, she, uh, and I forget the word they use, but some of the things that people do use to try to take these away is, um, Mylar tape that they twist and, uh, she said, anything that makes it look like it's a larger creature. But she did actually say, if you take a large, black, plastic bag and hang from your trees, they do think it's one of their own and, and it's dangerous maybe to be there because it either dead or hurt. That, that comes from Atlanta, don't, I.
And again, who was she with?
She's with the National Wildlife and.
U.S. Wildlife.
U.S. Wildlife and Fish Federation in Atlanta. They're the ones that have to, they will, they are sending us a renewal for the permit.
This permit is federal, it's not state.
It's a federal.
Well, I would like to see us still contacting the state with, and, and try to reach out for any resources that they have to speed up this, because this is terrible.
And actually, TDEC landfill should be the one who, who sees, goes over and checks and sees what's going on there that's attracting these buzzards, basically. So we will, we'll reach out to them. Mr. Lowery has reached out to the state level of the, is it fishing wildlife? What is it that?
U.S. Fish and Wildlife?
He's reached out to the state level and they've called us. But, but you're right, we have to go to the source of why, what's attracting these there, and what do you do to stop that? Cause, uh, it apparently is becoming a problem around town. Because, uh, it apparently is becoming a problem around town. Yes, ma'am.
I have, I do have a question because I'm, I couldn't find this information anywhere. Is the landfill owned by the city, the county, or a private company?
County.
County?
Mm-hmm. Did you have, yes?
If we get this permit reissued, who is in charge of actually doing the shooting when it leaves?
It would be the police. It has to be someone who's trained, yes. At the landfill, uh, I don't know what there's, how they're doing it over there. It's, but my concern is probably what you're thinking. It's inside the city limits. Got to be someone who really knows what they're doing. And, and I wouldn't allow anyone to...
Probably populated area there in East Manhattan.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, in the water tank area, and I think, Ms. Teresa, didn't you say they chewed the insulation off part of the equipment there?
Yeah, it's off about a ripper. They got, got in there and it was a brand new piece of equipment at the time and chewed a bunch of insulation out of it.
Yes, so this is a terrible part. I can't even begin to think what it would be like to walk out your front door and see these things all over your lawn. That's awful.
Can I make a motion? Uh, just, I guess we'll just finish this discussion. Uh, make a motion to have the, uh, uh, city get a hold of the state, TWRA, whoever they need to. Get the permits and get moving on it and then just give us a report at the next...
We already...
That was to finish my motion.
We, we already do have a renewal coming for the permit. Is that what you're referring to? The kill permit?
Yeah, get the, basically go to continue on what you're saying. Get the state involved, contact TWRA. Get the, and EPA?
Uh, let's talk about EPA. That's federal and that's, EPA is not probably the thing you want to do.
I don't know. Yeah.
TWRA is the one you want to discuss with. We've already discussed.
Avoid three letter, H, S, R, S, EPA, DCS.
He's advised, you know, if we needed to, we could do what we need to do.
So, so you all have already contacted, so?
Yes.
I guess, uh, can we just...
The only concern would be making sure if we're going to be firing shots off in the city, make sure we're in a safer place. And that's, you have, half the time they're up there at landfill, half the time they're down here and half the time we're busy. And so, I mean, it's just going to have to be, we'll have to...
So like on your police report, can you get like a, uh, can you put like a vulture kill?
It's one would be zero.
And maybe, maybe we can look at it and that way, uh, our, our good neighbors here can track how many vultures are getting killed in, uh...
Again, we're not trying to make a lot.
No, we're not like, I was just...
We need to make sure we're doing it in a safe way.
I understand that too because I've got this one.
If we're firing shots off in the city, I want to make sure we're doing it safely.
But again, it's, to Councilman Petty's point, I think we do have to go to the root of them. And, and we will, we will try to get whatever state agency, it most likely be TDEC, that needs to come out there and see what needs to be done to keep these buzzards away from there.
Well, I would think TWRA could also be involved, but whatever, we need to stay on top of it so it, it doesn't get pushed way back like so many things that we've governed. This needs to be resolved.
No, I agree with you. I agree with, in fact, this is the first time, I guess, they've had a audience here. I didn't realize that. So, um, yes, and we'll, we will definitely work with you and we'll get on top of it. I'm very ser, sorry, this is even a situation. It shouldn't, it should not have gone on this long, honestly, so...
If you'd like to, you can hire me as a police officer. I'm just sitting over there.
There you go. Yes.
If you'd like either, there'll be plenty for all of us.
Okay.
I'll pass on a vulture, but...
Who, who can I, who among you, because we'll keep a report going. Mr. Snyder, are you the, okay, we'll keep you posted and you can keep all your neighbors posted here. I'll, I will make some calls tomorrow to T, to TDEC.
Any help we can get with this, we appreciate.
We'll, we'll call the state level, TDEC tomorrow.
I'm at home a lot during the day. Like she said, you know, when I come out in the morning, they're just everywhere. And when you see these things close up, they're like thirty, thirty-five feet and they're not scared and there's so many. And the droppings are all over my back patio. I can't...
It's awful. I'm so sorry. This happened.
Well, just so y'all know, if you hear shots in that area...
I'll be glad. I just...
Yes.
Yes.
I will, I will call tomorrow if I find out any, any more. I'll pass it along or if I hear back up next week, we'll, we'll...
Any help would be great.
As Councilman Petty, we're, we're going to get behind this and we're going to do whatever it takes. And again, we apologize for having to do.
I had no idea this was...
Good job, continue.
Thank you very much. Just two more items on our agenda and we're all...
There's got a motion on the table. Do you want to keep it?
Oh, yeah. I'll rescind that motion since they're already...
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much for coming tonight.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we have one, uh... Mr., Mr. Chaz, are you here? Oh, okay. He wanted to speak to a parking issue, is that correct?
Look at Chaz. I say him as...
Okay. All right. Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. We share, I guess.
My name is Chaz Kent and I live on Fisher Avenue. And the item that I have up tonight is a safety issue about the parking, uh, on Main Street on Fisher Avenue at the Methodist Church. Especially on Sundays and Wednesdays when they have church service, they park on both sides of the road through there. And you can't hardly get one vehicle up through Fisher Avenue. When I drive up through there, I'm just about mirroring everybody that'll go up through there. And what I would like to see done was on the north side of Fisher Avenue, have a, I know parking sign put up there. Because on the south side of Fisher Avenue, there is handicap parking places already marked on the street. And if the church parking lot was full, I wouldn't say a word about it. But when you've got five or six cars in the parking lot and they're pretty much blocking Fisher Avenue, me and the other residents on Fisher Avenue, we have a problem with that. And that's just, I would like for y'all to address it. And I kind of just wanted me to bring this issue up because I had brought it up to past administrations and got nowhere with it. And that's the reason why I come in front of y'all as a group to address it to y'all and let that hand have, have y'all want to. And I am a vice chair of solid waste, so I'll direct, uh, on the buzzer issue at the landfill. They're down to about a half an acre that they keep uncovered. And that is about the bare minimum that they can keep covered. And the reason why they're over there is where the kitchen products are dumped in the landfill. That's like filet mignon to them. And that's the reason why there's so many over there. And the reason why they're worse in the winter than the summer is because of the seagulls come in. And the seagulls are a whole lot more aggressive bird than the buzzards, so they run the buzzards off. And the seagulls eat. And then when they get done, the buzzards come back in. So, that's all I have.
I have a question on the, on the Fisher Avenue and I'm guilty. I parked there myself. I think Bill has time to hold me too. And never thought, thought about it. But, uh...
Parked around that.
My question is because of the, uh, most of the people that park down through there, I could probably tell myself in there are elderly. But, uh, to me, it would make more sense to alleviate the problem is to allow the parking on the north side of Fisher and move the handicap over on that side so that the elderly are not crossing the street.
Well, I've lived there twenty years and I've never seen anybody with a handicap placard or license plate parking them spots. It's just regular, regular people down there. And I have had neighbors that told me that if they had a cheap vehicle, they would come through there and take the side out every one of them.
Would you, uh, is there a particular reason, north or south, or are you, are you opposed to either?
I think that's kind of my...
Well, the handicap parking is already on the south side, which is on the church side. And to me, it would be smarter just to leave it on the church side and let people park up and down that side and just leave the north side open.
He's right.
The north side is the one that's on...
On Digger's, Digger's side.
I apologize that you're on, okay, I was taking out of college. Okay. I see where you come from now.
Yeah. And, uh, the thing about it, if it's like that and somebody turns in or tries to turn in on Main Street and somebody's coming down Fisher Avenue, somebody has to back up. And my mama has got caught in that situation before and she said something about backing out on Main Street. And I said, don't you ever back out on Main Street. I said, make the people on Fisher back up. Because she's ninety-one and, and I don't, I'd hate to say that to anyone, but the cause of it.
Do you, would there, is there something you would like to ask us to, them to do?
All I'd like to see is a sign or two put up about no parking.
Was this required?
That's, that's all, that's all I'd like to see.
Require a motion or not?
Okay.
Well, yeah, if you get that.
Can we take this under consideration perhaps at the next council?
I think so. And meanwhile, I'll talk to Pastor at the Methodist Church and...
Okay. Call to Digger also. I, let me just tell you, we did the same issue with, on the parking on Fight Avenue about two or three years ago. And we, we did something only to reverse it about two or three council meetings later because of citizens' uproar. So it may be that we need to engage people that are directly affected by this, which would be Digger and also Mrs. Ruby. See what they say before you, before you do something.
You know, I'm not wanting to stop it on both sides, just one side where people can, it is a safety issue.
Do, do we want to add that to our public forum on five thirty?
I don't think there's any reason to.
Yeah, let's, let's put it back to the other. Meanwhile, I'll, I'll try to talk to Monica and see if, if we can have a volunteer for the time being until we do something, but...
That would be greatly appreciated.
Bring it to the table.
Councilman, did you...
Makes us aware of it.
Not, well, it kind of goes with that. When we do discuss this again, you know, I think this is a ongoing issue around town.
It, it is.
There's some places in town that you can't get down the street because of the worst kinds of street.
That, that is correct.
Uh, bad. I mean, and there's little kids out in the street and they're here in town. So, I think when this is addressed, there's some other locations in town should be addressed too.
Could address it as a system-like.
Because sometimes I work for the city and there's sometimes that we have trouble like going around to pick up the curbside and stuff like that because we can't, can't hardly get through because of it. I, I definitely agree.
Okay. So, uh, if I'm hearing correctly, we'll readdress this at our next regular meeting. Talk about if, if this is a system-wide situation and we'll deal with it a bit more. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Thanks, Chaz. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, we have, uh, one final thing, a resolution here.
You guys should have got this in the email in your packet that I sent. This is a request from the county finance slash mayor's office. Uh, that it's appointed a new mayor for a six-year term to the North Central Solid Waste Planning Board.
This is county mayor?
The county mayor, yes, ma'am. Mayor Jeff Mason.
Would you leave it placed?
Oh, well, sure.
Okay.
Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero one. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Carthage, Tennessee hereby endorse the appointment of Mayor Jeff Mason for a term of six years. Eight thirty-one two thousand and eighteen through three thirty-one two thousand and twenty-four as a member of the North Central Solid Waste Planning Board. Notes, number one, the Smith County representative appointment to the three county Macon, Smith, and Trousdale SCPR board expired eight thirty-one two thousand and eighteen. Note number two, the North Central Planning Region is responsible throughout its member counties for the development and maintenance of state Department of Environment and Conservation mandated solid waste planning, including collection assurance, twenty-five percent reduction, public education, and disposal. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage duly passed and approved this blank date of blank two thousand and nineteen.
And my understanding is this is the three counties of all...
Yes, Macon, Smith, and Trousdale.
All of the cities have been issued the same resolution.
As far as I know, yes, ma'am.
So it's just, um...
As an endorsement.
I believe it was done from Mayor Nesbitt as well when he was in office.
I have a motion that we endorse this resolution.
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, we endorse this if you, we'll sign it and pass it along. Thank you. Is there any other new business that, uh, before we move out of this meeting?
Yes. Um, speaking of, um, street parking issues and projects, um, last meeting, we were supposed to get an update on where we were with the third and main project. Additionally with, um, since you're here as well, Les, um, they were going to basically be replacing some water lines underneath Main Street there around the square. Um, I would like to get an update on that and, uh... Uh, and I've had a lot of different businesses ask me about where that's going. Um, that's right, basically right across the street from where, yeah.
This is one of the, Don is involved with that grant, so you can address that, please.
We had a meeting today with the mayor to get our marching orders on that. Um, as you know, we started that process in two thousand and sixteen. So, um, now that with the mayor's support, I think it should start moving forward after delay.
Yeah.
What kind of timeline are we looking at on this moving forward?
Um, this was so new, the, um, there was, this is the first movement in months on it. Um, so I, I, I guess we'd have to talk to the mayor about, um, contacting the state and, and reissuing the go order for it. So, once that happens, uh, we'll have to see what the state says.
Okay. Um, can we, uh, request an update, uh, an official update on that for the next meeting in April?
Sure.
Okay. Um, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting tall. Uh, the other one, uh, Diane, uh, from River's Edge, uh, expressed concern about, uh, basically like if you, y'all know where River's Edge is and Harris, Harris Automotive is and she just rented this out and it's got an awning and there's just, uh, tires right up next to it. And it's obviously in the easement zone. And she's asking, um, I asked her if she had spoken to Harris Automotive. She said she hadn't, but, uh, Digger Poindexter had, who's the owner of the property. And I guess, um, these, these tires are prevent, are inhibiting her business. She can't put things out there. And then also, I guess in the summer, they attract mosquitoes or whatnot. And it's obviously a violation of easement. Um, so it's a violation of her property, her liberties. Um, is there any, what, what do we need to be, what can we do about that?
We have been doing, we've sent two...
I sent a letter last week.
I saw them haul up a bunch of tires today.
I, I actually stopped by two days ago and asked the gentleman.
They were hauling the day. Sorry you spent so long.
Yeah. Yeah, we stopped by.
I'm Dr. Pay.
They are aware.
I think they took a huge truckload off today, is what I'm understanding, so...
Gotcha. Um, the other one was, um, as far as the, uh, there's the rezoning up there that we discussed at the, uh, planning commission. Um, and we, we were moving it to C two and you had recommended R two. C two would...
Actually, that didn't, no, that, we got a notice that, no, that didn't happen because we had no idea who actually even brought that up. So we're going to revisit that at the next planning commission.
So ba, so basically that we're going to revisit the way we're going to rezone at the next planning commission is on it?
Well, we're going to revisit how this actually, actually has to be applied for legally to even ask for a zoning. It wasn't applied for legally to even ask for that.
Could y'all point out what part we're talking?
If you look at M two right up there, right, uh, right there and then go to the left there, Matt, those six lots right there, they're looking at rezoning that possibly to C two or R two. Either one, like she said, it's going to be discussed at the next planning commission.
What happened is...
And it's the second one right there. There, there's a, uh, there's a church that's wanting to plan to move in there. And, um, neighbors, I don't think neighbors were necessarily opposed to having things like churches or, or nice areas.
That's actually an item for the planning commission, so we talked about that there, yes.
Well, actually, and there actually is, uh, at one point in time was a commercial in that first house.
Yeah. I'm just, and I understand that.
The problem was the owner of the property wasn't the one that brought it up, so we have to revisit it. And, and there's a proper way to apply for that, but you don't do it anonymously through someone who doesn't own the property.
I'm not, I'm not applying. I'm just giving information if that's okay.
Okay, but that's for the planning commission. That's what I'm saying. First they have to...
Since we're all in the same room and it's a public forum and I'm not breaking any sunshine laws, I'm just trying to communicate information to the city council about what, what the planning commission is doing. I'm not asking anyone to make decisions, but just make you all aware that, uh, there's a couple, there's a church that's looking to move in there and it might be a possible place for new businesses to move, move in. So just more of an aware item and then to, uh, address some of our constituents, um, out there that, um, what you said is we're going to have a planning commission next week. So now they know that, so awesome.
And they're welcome to come to the planning commission meeting at five thirty. Anyone who's interested in this, yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, next one was had a constituent ask about an update on what's going on with the area of the walking track that is, um, underwater or something like, or it's, uh, not finished or something like that? I don't know if anyone's in, uh, if anyone knows about that.
I know we've had a lot of water and a lot of things been underwater, but walking tracks.
Is it, is it incomplete or is, is the walking track... Is it, is it incomplete, or is, is the walking track complete? I mean, that's basically what they were asking is, is.
At some phase of the project is complete, we had planned to move forward and expand the walking track, but those grants are in the air now.
Dom, can you speak to that?
Okay.
This morning, uh, the mayor called us in for a meeting about the different grants that were on hold for the last few months, and gave us a go-ahead on the walking track.
Well, I don't know, they've been on hold, we just don't have the financing yet, so, yeah. So, yes, the, the walking track and the Spring Street thing that we're talking about, and then up Third Street, Third Avenue.
Um, the environmental review has been completed on the walking track project. Um, no state or federal agency had any, um, issues, and they all checked out the property. Um, thought it would be a good use for recreation, um, because most of the time they use a lot of unbuildable lots for recreation. And if you choose to move forward on the project and accept the eighty-eight thousand dollars from the state of Tennessee, you can move forward pretty fast after that clears, and today's the day it cleared.
So do we want to basically bring this up as an agenda item next meeting, um, on approving that grant, or not?
We can do.
We only voted for it last year, last year.
So it's voted upon, so it's just basically enacted it.
Certain ways or other.
Okay.
It just takes the time to get that money.
Well, I didn't know because you guys have been returning a lot of grants, so I didn't know if that was one of the ones you wanted to return, so I, I didn't want to sneak out of turn. But, um, you've had, it's already been through the planning committee, it went through the planning committee in October, and it had a resolution and had four public hearings, so if you guys want to move forward with it and not, um, return it, then you can move forward with it, yeah. Absolutely.
Need a motion?
I think that's, that's in the plan and recording, so.
Do we need a motion to continue something that we've already voted?
I don't think you have to have a motion, I think it's supposed to be just continued then, yeah. Thank you for updating me, I, I wasn't, I just wasn't updated on it.
Okay, any, any other new business?
Um, ch-ch-ch-ch-ch-ch-ch, I apologize, I just had a lot of people emailing me stuff in the past two days. Um, requests for information, um, basically, I've been requesting that the, uh, city get me information on water levels, basically everything that was presented here, uh, BOD levels, ammonia levels, chloride levels. And to get those levels, I'm, I, I'm going and I'm saying, well, you need to go through the mayor's office to get that, and I'm requesting it, and then I'm asking to be, fill, fill out a public information request where it's almost as if I feel I'm being tracked by the, uh, governing, the, the check and the balance to, they want to know every move I'm making to find out information about things, where I would like to independently make mo- I would like to independently find out information. Um, so I'm just trying to, I'm just curious why I have to fill out a public request record?
Same thing I would have to do if I went to the county to get any kind of public information, if I went to the state. Any citizen who wants public. Any citizen.
Do you gotta go to the city to get it?
May I finish this, please?
Sure.
Any, any citizen who wants public information fills out what's called an open record request, that's, that's mandated by everybody. The reason you do that is not only do you have that, a right to have that information, the people you are checking on or the information you're checking on also has a right to know who's asking for the information, it's a two-way street.
Do you fill out this information when you request information?
As the head of the city, I have access to that, that's part of what my job is.
As a city council member that's been elected, I would like to, I would like to have access to the same information you have access to.
Well, you have, if you ran for mayor, you would have that access, as a city, a, a regular citizen. If I went to the county, I'm not the county mayor, I would have to add, I would have.
I'm not a county and council member.
Okay, I would have to fill out an open records form, that's part of how, how things are handled.
Okay. Do, do, does everybody else see the same thing that I'm seeing here? Do you all, do you all feel that you need to be monitored by the executive branch to find out information or not?
Sir, we're not monitoring you, it's required by every citizen.
Can I, can I ask them, can I ask them that question, I was asking, actually asking the council?
It's not been the policy of prior mayors to require us to fill out an information request.
Okay.
We've always had access to information since we are elected officials of the city.
Would this be information pertinent to the running of our water or sewer plant that you're asking information?
Any information we've needed of the city, we have had access to.
So, anytime you want to call the water sewer plant to say, I need this five-page information, you think they should be able to do, you should be able to do that.
Absolutely.
That's not what your charter says.
Mm-mm, no, it's not.
Again, and.
You might want to change your charter, but you're, under the constraints of your charter, that's not what it says, it didn't give you authority to it.
Again, I, I think that, and respectfully, Mr. Bass, again, that's a, that's an empty opinion.
No, it's not an empty opinion, you look at your charter and, and see what you can do, that's where, where, that's where your authority begins and ends.
So.
I didn't admit it.
Our, our authority also comes together, but, but this, this is where I'm, this is where I'm challenge, this is where I'm challenging, okay? Our authority is given to us from, as the people, from the people, okay?
Your authority is given by the charter.
That's right.
Period.
Yeah.
It don't get any clearer than that, Cole.
That, that's the Bible for.
You don't have authority from the people, the people elected you, but you gotta live by the constraints of what the charter says.
Okay, but again, the charter also says that the, um, that the mayor has to carry out the will of the council, and that's not happening either. So what's the, what's the.
Show me that in the charter.
What's the repercussions?
Show me that in the charter, sir. Our charter is very, very plain, you have authority, once you're in this group, as a group of six who are elected to be legislators in this group. Once you're outside of this group, as he said, you not have individual authority.
What is the point of having a council if we're, all of our information is filtered by you?
I am not filtering you, I have not filtered anything you want, I have not stopped you from coming to the sewer plant, have I stopped you? No.
I have to ask permission to get information, that would be a filter.
No, even if I go to that water sewer plant, I have, uh, the courtesy to call them ahead and say, when is the good time for me to come? I don't just pop in, I call them ahead. I don't ask them to let me take pictures inside because I know I'm not supposed to be taking pictures of that. There, there are certain, I'm sorry, but there are certain constraints in how government works, and I know you don't enjoy that, and I don't, sometimes myself.
Enjoy that at all.
But our charter is the way it's written, and you took those classes like some of us in here did, and he told you, oh, and that, that your authority is within the body of six when you meet in this group, that's your authority.
So I guess my.
You have great authority to, to talk together and to vote and to do the things you do here.
I guess my recommendation would be that we look at, and I'll work on some investigation, that we look at changing the charter so that we have a little bit more, um, uh, freedom to gather information without having, with, with, basically, so we can not, we can be that check and balance. We're supposed, as, as you're supposed to check us, we're supposed to check you, and if we're, again.
I'm not really checking on any of you, we come together to try to, we serve the city, we don't serve each of us individually.
We don't make paychecks from it. We got elected and we have to go out and we have to balance any decisions that you make, and I'm just saying that it, my, I feel like my hand, it's, it's, you can go and request this information as many times as you want to, and I have no idea that you've done it. Now, if I go do, if I go request this information, you can monitor all my activity. Now, I don't see how that's a viable check and balance.
That's what you're doing, very honestly, but the people that you're getting it from may care, and they have a right to know who's asking for that information, especially if it's personal.
Have a right to know what's in their water.
If it's personal information that you're asking about any of our employees, that's just part of how government works, it's called an open records act. You're more than welcome to fill it out, again, if I went anywhere else around here, I would have to do the same thing. Because I happen to be the person who runs the city on a day-to-day basis, I have to have access to that in order to run the city. It's a whole different ballgame, that's, as, as our attorney has said, that's how our charter is set up. To change a private act charter, you have to go through this legislature, it's a very, I mean, it can be done, but if you do it and, and, and it's not something you later want, it's very hard to ever change it again, cause they don't appreciate when you make a change frivolously. So, at some point, maybe we need to sit down and look at our charter and do a group effort of what needs to, what we need to do with this charter. But just to say, make our charter so we, we have to define state or federal law that has open records act, we can't do that. We can't do that, that's the law, because you have a right to know who's checking in on you, just like you have a right to check on somebody else. It's a two-way street, so, um, anyway.
I would like to make a rec- recommendation, if I could, that, uh, we table this discussion for now, I understand Cole's reasoning for wanting, uh, know what's in there, it makes perfect sense, uh, according to Mr. Bass, we, it's, it's clear that it, we, at this time, we can't do it, so I think that's something we need to table, we've been here two and a half hours.
Yes.
And need to calm down, think about the proper ways to do this.
I'm not, I think we should work together, I mean, this is just getting ridiculous. Seriously. Just arguing back and forth.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree. If there's no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?